I have to do, hold on, hold on, I almost forgot. My public service announcement. Could I find it on my phone? As Chairman of the Board of Selectmen for the town of Newton, New Hampshire, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12, pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe or listen contemporaneously to this meeting which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are utilizing Zoom conferencing for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate during this meeting through this platform and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number, and Diane, I have the old one on here.
Oh.
If we can fill in the blank later here if you look for it. And we also have a meeting ID number, we'll have in a minute. But we previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the conferencing call via phone. If anyone has a problem, please email BOSSsecretary@newtonnh.net. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. So if Diane, you want to fill in the blanks there.
Yeah, hang on.
Motion, just so everybody knows.
Okay, so the telephone number is 929-205-6099. The meeting ID is 869-0753-6632. And the link is, did you need me to spell out the link?
I never do that. I think we're okay.
Okay.
This was posted, so everybody should be able to get it.
I'll update your script.
Okay, thank you. And I think the two camera shy people, we know that they're, they're, well, three camera shy people. I have so far, no, we have a few more than that. So I know we have Charlie, we have Larry, we have Pete. Who else is on the phone? Oh, Chief Alcadino and somebody else?
Dino?
Tina, I saw Tina's name. Anybody else? They don't want to introduce themselves, so we have a good amount of people. So without further ado, why we're all here, Trish McCarthy's update, if you would, Trish.
Okay. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thanks.
Okay. So I've got a few phone calls to report on, actually three. So I'm going to start with yesterday morning. We were activated for rallies that took place last night. This is the state of New Hampshire. They let us know that they were peaceful and they occurred without incident. There was a vigil last night and they said they will be activated at the EOC until everything is completed. As of yesterday, we had 4,687, 85 persons with COVID, 2,045 have recovered, and 245 deaths attributed to COVID. They talked, the Human Health and Services said they anticipate moving inventory out of the National Guard hangar and into a new space that they acquired just because they're getting overrun with equipment, which is great. I guess that means we'll get it when we order it. They're working on staffing requests with FEMA for a hospital in Manchester and also a nursing home. Military support said that they're continuing to support the mission and the military police were in, supporting local police with demonstrations. The logistics completed a delivery of testing swabs yesterday. They said to remind us to please keep going through our mission tasks to report items, PPEs that we need. Also effective yesterday, Manchester Transit Authority initiated their Phase 1 fixed service for reopening. No other significant changes in aviation, rail, or mass transit to report at this time. They deployed the incident management truck to both justice, to both the Justice Hall and for a rally for George in Hampton and a candle vigil for George in Dover. They did provide a video feed from the state police helicopter to the EOC just so that they would be aware of real time incidents in both locations. They said they've got 25 first responders as of yesterday that have tested positive COVID. It was a decrease from 36 to 15 that are being tracked and quarantined, and that 15 is three are firefighters, one is EMS, and 11 are police. They have 54 frontline workers in tier one alternative housing, and that is from four first responders and 50 healthcare workers. They also talked, the JIC talked about our online trends and they're saying there's lighter conversation about COVID and more conversation about national protests. My next call was this morning, they said we're activated for rallies that took place last night. There were several protests planned around the state today and they will be activated again tonight. They said they're working with FEMA in case hurricane season is severe this year. That's all we need right now, right? Let's get over the pandemic first. They also said as far as operations go, they provided dynamic message signs to the city of Manchester last night to assist with traffic management coming into the city, most of which is because of the protests. They also provided additional law enforcement to support the city of Manchester last night. It included aviation, special events response team, and additional specialized units. They ended with saying this morning, while the primary event was peaceful, other gatherings did require law enforcement actions to disperse crowds that had become unruly and was interfering with traffic. They also said they're working with Bristol and Keene to support their mission to preserve public safety and safeguard citizens' right to assemble at scheduled rallies both today during the day and they expect more tonight. And then the second call today was probably the most extensive. So we have, as far as our numbers go, 4,749 cases in New Hampshire. That's up 64 from yesterday. They have 3,071 recovered persons in New Hampshire. That's up 126, which is actually 63%, so that's pretty good. They have 256 COVID deaths in New Hampshire. That's up by 11, not so good. The Attorney General's Office had a lot to say today, so I'm going to read this, sorry if my paper's in the way. They talked about day camp guidelines and they said that they apply to all organizations and entities running summer camps, including municipal programs because of restrictions under Emergency Order 16. They said that day camps can only occur indoor facilities. For instance, ice hockey camps are permitted, provided they follow the day camp guidelines. They said day camps offering youth support activities must also adhere to amateur and youth sports guidelines. There was a question, are day camp facilities allowed to utilize a pool or other water facilities like beaches, water play, et cetera? And the answer is yes, provided that the day camp is operating and provided that the day camp adheres to this state's day camp guidelines and applicable CDC guidelines outlined. And they gave us a link for that for anyone that needs it. I should probably send it to Rec or to Matt, I'll send it to you.
Okay.
The day camp guidelines require organizations to review and follow CDC considerations for youth and summer camps. And those guidelines can be found here at, and I'll give it to you, but it is, it starts under CDC.gov and then coronavirus, and it talks about community schools and summer camps. It said that CDC guidelines in turn provide that camps follow considerations for public pools, hot tubs, and water playgrounds during COVID-19. They also talked about, and we'll, we'll get into portable toilets, which was interesting, obviously, for our beach situation and the Grannie Park, and that's towards the end of this call. But they talked about lodging guidelines and said that all congregate amenities, pools, hot tubs, saunas, exercise facilities, must follow the health and fitness guidelines. They said that health and fitness guidelines state that public or open swim times will not be allowed during Phase 1. They said health and fitness guidelines permit scheduled small groups, fitness classes, including those that take place in a pool, such as water aerobics. But then they went on to say lodging facilities may similarly follow pool facilities to be open for any such scheduled fitness classes, provided that the facility adheres to health and fitness guidelines. It's a lot of words. Pools at lodging facilities shall not be open for laps, public swim, or open swim. They went on to talk about lodging guidelines for out of state, which could include Airbnbs. I don't know if we have any in town, maybe Nancy would know that, or Shanty. But it did say that a signed document from the guests attesting that all persons staying at the lodging facility remained at home for at least 14 days before arriving in New Hampshire. Of course, then they followed up with saying, this is not mandatory, but lodging facilities are strongly encouraged to notify each guest of this recommendation at the time that the reservation is actually made. Businesses can create their own forms and set their own document retention policies for these forms. They also talked about can individuals rent their homes like through Airbnb, Verbo, or HomeAway? And the answer is yes, provided they follow lodging guidelines. The guidelines apply to all rented accommodation, including short term rentals. And they were all restricted under Emergency Order 27. They went on, someone asked a question, can municipal governments have in-person meetings if their governing body exceeds 10 members? The answer is yes. Emergency Order 16 permits organizations and municipalities to exceed the 10 person limit for day-to-day operations. However, only elected officials and essential staff shall be allowed on the premise during the meeting. The public shall be afforded remote access to the meeting pursuant to Emergency Order 12. So I thought that was interesting, that's the first time that's come up. And then they went on to say questions on craft fairs and similar activities like flea markets. And they said craft fairs must follow the universal guidelines and the retail guidelines. If the craft fair or flea market location does not have a permitted occupancy limit, it must follow the section of the Attraction Guidance for Outdoor Events, which actually does provide capacity limit to the number of people where social distancing is able to be safely maintained with at least six feet of separation between individuals and groups at all times. They went on to say, in order to ensure appropriate social distancing, access and egress to and from the location must be controlled and monitored. They suggested a rope, a gate, cones, sawhorses, or other delineation method to establish around the perimeter to make it easy for people to understand how to come in, how to leave, so that they can control the amount of people in this flea market or craft fair. Another question came up, if an employee, this was from a municipality, takes a vacation out of state, do they have a mandatory two week quarantine after returning? And more importantly, do we have to pay them during the quarantine time? And the Attorney General's Office said they will follow up with you. However, we did go on to the Municipal Association website and there are guidelines there. So if that happens to be something that you guys have to talk about, there is guidance for that. Another town said, our select board has received complaints that online meetings are hard to hear. Can we get reimbursed for the equipment we purchased to fix this issue? Our fire department's computer crashed as well. Can we use COVID funds for a new computer? And the answer was, the governors, the goal for municipal funds should be able to replace the sound equipment, go to their website, and for computer issues, reach out to our field rep because there's probably matching public assistance fund, which Larry and I, you know, for the most part, this has been talked about a little bit, so if we had to get it because of COVID, we probably could. Another town asked about YMCA day camps. And this was local, this was Kingston. They said they gather in large groups. They will all be on the same bus with hundreds of other kids. What are they supposed to do? And the answer was, six foot social distance spacing needs to be maintained. The Attorney General's Office will follow up with you. I don't know how that's going to happen. All I could think of is Camp Lincoln. Good luck with that.
Yeah, right.
Right? Another town asked, can an outdoor wedding of 30 people take place? It's considered an outdoor church service. The AG's office said we'll follow up with you. I should, they shouldn't get married, it's okay. No, I'm only kidding.
There's, you know, there's, there's some people out there who are, are going like this because they really don't want to get married.
Right, right.
Holding on to the hope.
Yes, this is perfect. And then they did further the outdoor church service and said, you know, are they limited to a number of people? And this has been a question we've talked about before. And the answer is yes. People should be spaced out in groups of no more than 10. And there will be more information in tonight's, they do a situation report every night. I checked just now before we got on, it's not done yet, but I'll share with you next week if it's anything that is pertinent to us and our churches. And then there was a question, is there guidance about how often porta potties in state parks or municipality areas have to be cleaned now that summer programs are open? And the answer is CDC has guidelines on it, they're going to put it in the sit rep tonight. But Larry and I took that a step further today and Larry called Sophia Johnson, she's a health officer special for the state. And we explained, you know, what we've got going on when our beach is in, in Grannie Park opens. And it's so funny, you know, it's, no offense, but it's typical that an attorney probably wrote this, Matt, because they cover themselves. So they said that, I'm going to read what she said, hello Trish and Larry. In a follow-up to your call regarding a cleaning schedule for portable toilets, I wanted to share the following resources with you. Nowhere could I find a reference as a timeframe in which it's recommended for the cleaning to take place, but wording in the documents do say practice routine cleaning of frequently touched surfaces. More frequent cleaning and disinfection may be required based on the level of use. And these high touch surfaces include tables, doorknobs, light switches, countertops, handles, desks, phones, keyboards, toilets, faucets, and sinks. One recommendation was start out with maybe three times a day, but she also said if you have more activity, then you may need to bump that up according to the activity that we have. So we wanted to share that with you and I think that was all my reports.
So it pains me to do this, but I have porta potty questions.
Oh, no.
The, kind of related to porta potties, so do we have access to disinfectant wipes right now? I know at one time they were almost impossible to get.
Larry, did you want to answer that?
I have ordering for some, but we also have the disinfect spray that we can use, it just buy some rags, it'd be the same thing.
Yeah, because I think the best we can do is have the lifeguards when they're on shift come up like a regular schedule. Just to, like you said, Trish, you know, those, those high contact areas. And, and then maybe when, maybe Tony can go to Grannie Park for us based on usage, right? So if, right, right now, the only, the only people who are going to really be using Grannie Park are big off of their practices. So we can, you know, we can do that. So, so I think it's a possibility we can keep this up as best we can. So that's good information to have. So appreciate that.
We did give out, Larry put together a box and Pat picked it up today for the beach, but we probably, when you're ready, need to put something together for the park and who's going to kind of take charge of it, where we're listing what we're giving out and who we gave it to, just so we can try to track things.
Yeah, good. So I think that's probably a good segue. So, and I'm, I'm going to let other people talk here because they have more information than I do, but I'll just kind of set the stage here. I, I truly believe with all this stuff as far as reopenings, it's kind of, as Dr. Fauci said, it's, it's the dimmer switch, it's not a light switch. So you don't, you don't turn all the lights on at once. You kind of put the dimmer, see how things go, and then turn it up again. So I, I think the board probably shares that in terms of whatever we reopen, we kind of have to have a phased approach to see how it works. So I know that a bunch of people on this call, some not able to, to come on, have been working on kind of a punch list in a, in a way to safely mitigate some risk in order to at least start to reopen. So who wants to take that one?
Well, do you want me to start with the task force we met yesterday?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay. So Cheryl, Mary Jo, and Kim had provided the task force with a punch list that they developed and thought would be like a soft opening, a way to get going. And so we talked about a lot of things and we know that we've got to put together a plan so that we can submit it to the Board of Selectmen for your review and editing, whatever it may require. But during the discussion, first and foremost, before we can open, we've got to have panels installed at Mary Jo's window, Diane's window, and the library has three windows actually, two large ones and one small one. So I did meet with Newton Glass to get the estimates. Mary Jo was there to let Mark know what she wanted, what she requests, what she requested. Diane wasn't there, but we took Mary Jo's lead and gave Diane a very similar thing with, with an opening, like a pass through. Then Terry met with Mark and myself as well, and he had to measure both the first floor and the second floor desk area for a large area. And then a smaller area on the first floor, I guess where people pass through stuff to the printer. So the task force talked about this and thought, I let them know that what Mark said is if we can get these things ordered, because now everybody is doing this, the orders are taking longer, they're getting back ordered. He said he's about, his orders that he's doing now, this shadow proof, I don't want to call it glass, Lexan is taking about two weeks to come in. So the task force talked about that and knows that no matter what, we can't open until this happens. Till the glass, the Plexi stuff gets in and he installs it in all of the locations where it needs to be. And okay, I'll keep going. And then in addition to that, in anticipation of opening, the Chief Alcadino did share with us some floor like footprints on the floor like you see in the grocery stores that we can put down for, to show like guidance. We don't need a lot of them. And I think I sent you, unfortunately, it probably didn't come in color. But, or maybe it did, because I might have sent it from the chief's email. But it's got boxes, there's four in a box. And if we bought four boxes, it was $65 a box. Larry thought that we should get four boxes. Everyone on the call thought that was sensible because we'll need them for downstairs, we'll need them for the library. Cheryl mentioned we might need them for upstairs for when it gets closer to voting. So that was like $270 plus if they charge us shipping, whatever that is. So the, the task force thought, let's start with this. Mary Jo has also put together some anticipated hours that they can work, but again, the, the task force isn't prepared to give you the opening plan because we're still working on it. Hopefully we'll have an open plan by a week from now. We've got a call on Tuesday. I promised Kim that I'd work on it and send stuff out to everybody so everyone can edit it and put in what you think makes sense. But it includes lots of things like the bathrooms downstairs, one for public, one for employees. Employees only in the kitchen area, lots of things that we talked about that would be instrumental in a soft close. So that's about it. So I, because we're only making recommendations to the Board of Selectmen, we're hoping that then the Board of Selectmen will comply with the electronic voting and the roll call votes to see if you want to purchase the floor signage as well as taking the estimate from the Newton Glass man so that we can get those ordered.
So my question on the, the glass for the windows and stuff.
Yeah.
To me, the way you've described them, tell me if I'm correct. They're really, they're really updating the existing windows. So they have a usefulness post whatever, whatever noise comes. It's, it's, they're really, I think what I'm getting at, if, if you go into a grocery store right now and they're all, they all have panels in front of them, I envision those panels are going to come down someday.
That's right.
I want to make sure if we're, we're investing in, it's not something we're going to necessarily throw away.
Right.
Or two. So what you're telling me is that quote that you showed us is something that we can use forever.
Correct. It's going to be more like what you see at, when you go down to the Merrimack Bank. You know, it's, it's more permanent, it's in channels. It's not this wishy washy stuff that's floating around because somebody has it, you know, duct taped up on the ceiling or something. Mary Jo said she wanted, you know, one big window with two pass-throughs. So what you see now that she has is going to be gone. It'll be one big window with the pass-throughs. Diane's opening will remain the same, but with a pass-through for her. It was a little bit harder at the library. I don't know if Terry's on the call, but you know, they've got a right angle counter and in one of the places I said she's going to really have to put a file cabinet or something up because we can't do a complete surround of this stuff because then the employees are going to be stuck there for the rest of their life. So it, it was the best he could do and you, as you saw, those were the biggest ones, the most expensive ones. But they will look nice, they're going to be in channels. He measured how high they're going to be, I think that was something like 30, 38 inches high. It's on the measurement, I think, I mean, the estimate that I sent you how high. But they also will be in channels and be permanent, so it doesn't look like, you know, our teenage kids did it.
Yeah, right. What is, what is the board think of, of that baby steps here? So this is kind of a thing, it seems like kind of a no brainer. What's the board think?
A no brainer.
Matt, I have, I have no issues with ordering both of those items.
Okay.
Me neither.
Okay. Kate, you're good, it sounds like.
Yes.
So, and I guess Lisa's not on, so the, I believe, Trish, if you could help us with the motion just for Newton Glass and garage door. So what was that dollar figure? I think it was two something?
Yep, let me grab it. Okay. So.
I nominate Kate to make this motion.
Okay, so Kate, his motion that the Board of Selectmen will accept the estimate from Newton Glass and Garage Door for $2,305 with half of that as a deposit and the other half due 30 days upon completion to be taken out of, I don't know what account you want to take it out of, COVID will end up paying for this. Probably buildings, government buildings.
Government buildings.
Probably. And I think that's the motion.
So moved.
Great job, Kate.
It was hard.
Seconded by Charlie. So we're going to do a roll call vote. Larry, how do you vote?
Hi.
Charlie? Uh, Charlie?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Matt's an aye, that's unanimous. So the floor markers.
Yes.
What is, what is the cost of those again?
Okay, so they're boxes of four in a box. And if we buy four boxes to seven boxes, they're $65 a box. And last, yesterday at the meeting, I think Nancy figured out, oh, did I lose everybody?
No, you're still here.
Okay, I don't know what happened to my screen. It was $270 and what I don't know is if they'll charge us shipping. The Fire Chief has an account, so I don't know, Chief Alcindino, if you've ordered from them before, I don't know if they're shipping, but it would be $270 for 40 boxes. And we certainly could get more if the Board of Selectmen wants less. With four in a box, we thought, well, we probably need three downstairs at Town Hall. We need, I'm not sure how many at the library. And as Cheryl mentioned, eventually we may have voting in September, we'll need some upstairs. So Larry thought four boxes would be a great way to start.
Mary Jo, can you put a ESPN on?
Oh?
No. So the.
I asked a question about them. I just went online to look at them. What are they gonna look like? I see like markers, decals that say stop. I mean, I see a lot of people doing duct tape and an X. So what are these, what are they looking?
Nope. Okay, so I sent a new one to you today about 4:30.
Okay.
And it, I just sent it to the Selectmen Nancy and Diane. And this came from the, the Fire Chief. And if you'll see, the name is kind of funny. The company is called New Pig. And it says, thank you for practicing social distancing. It's got two feet.
Oh, okay, thanks. New Pig found it.
So can I ask a silly question with those? How do they adhere to the floor?
Chief, do you know?
They just peel and stick.
If it's sent, if it's anything like the hazmat mats we have, Diane is correct. They, they have two kinds. They have one that's peel and stick and one that's not as sticky, if you know what I mean. So they easily, you can easily move them. You just unpeel them and stick them someplace else. But I think those that Trish is talking about, uh, the peel and stick.
Right. It actually says, I found my piece of paper here. It says, builds awareness in lobbies, offices, cafeterias and more, stays in place, won't damage floors, won't peel or curl up. It's also anti-slip, which is a good idea. And it is just peel and stick like Diane said.
So that was just my question because when I'm in these stores and I'm looking at those, I'm like, are they ever gonna come off the floor, you know? Like, are, are they gonna have to redo their floors? So.
Right.
I don't know. Maybe there'll be a, a permanent reminder of what we've all been through, but. Okay, so do we want to make a motion on that, uh, not to exceed, or do we have an exact number?
Well, we don't know about shipping, so four boxes are $275 plus shipping, but I, again, I don't know what that is.
The, the shipping depends on the total amount ordered. I might have stuff that I have to order. At the same time, if the town orders this, I have some hazmat stuff that I have to order, so I wouldn't be too concerned with the shipping.
Okay.
Trish?
Oh, I'm sorry.
What said 65 a box, right?
Yes.
That comes out to 260, not 270.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it's 65 a box, it says.
Okay.
All right, so Kate's gonna make another motion.
So move, whatever Trish says.
Yeah.
Thank you, Kate.
What's the bottom line?
Let's get the right figures though.
Yes, 2, 200 and what'd you say Nancy?
60.
260.
Yep.
Okay, Kim.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. Let's do a roll call vote. Larry?
I'm an aye, but Chief, when you order them, if we can get a separate invoice, just for logistic reasons, without your other stuff on there.
Not, not a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Charlie?
Aye.
And Kate?
Aye.
Matt's an aye, that's unanimous. While we're here, just to complicate matters. The, so Chief Jewett helped me the other day with a supplier he works with. They had, we needed a hand washing station for the town beach. So while he was there, they had two more. So we have three hand washing stations and they're the ones, they run off a battery. So you, you fill the reservoir and, you know, you put your hands under there and you do this thing. So we're gonna have one at the town beach. So what I was thinking is the other two, we could keep in Town Hall for future use or future deployment, wherever we want to deploy it. We don't have to decide that now. But what I, what I'd like the board to do, motion tonight, charge one to rec and the other two to general government and buildings.
Matt, how much are they?
I believe they are, Chief Jewett, are you on?
We can, we can, if we order it right away, we can submit that under COVID too, as far as as a hand sanitizing project.
We already, we already have an invoice.
Okay.
So it's a matter of.
So you can get that to us.
Okay, so Kim just sends the invoice to Larry, Trish? Is that what we're gonna do?
Yes.
Everybody's okay with that?
I've, I've got a question as a resident. I know I'm not a selectman, but I have a question.
Yeah.
If we've got two, would it make sense to put one at the transfer station because they have no hand washing station?
Yeah. What do you guys think? Not a bad idea?
Good idea.
Excellent.
Well, I, I think we should have one for the town beach, Town Hall, Greenie Park, transfer station. So if we need to order a couple more, we can, while it's covered.
Yep. Well, we, we have three right now in hand. So.
Then we should, we should get two more, one for the Town Hall and one spare.
Not a bad idea.
Diane's giving an oath. What's up?
So, I mean, we have a sink if in case of an emergency, but why would somebody, and then we have the, the public restroom. So we don't need one, I don't think, at the Town Hall.
I think it's probably for the people coming in, right?
Right, but people aren't gonna do that. They're.
They're not gonna stop and wash their hands there either.
No.
No.
Thinking you don't need it.
I actually, I would say, and we'll go to Shanti next, but I would say whenever I'm in a bank or anything like that, if I'm leaving and I see a hand wash station, I use it. I don't, I don't go to the men's room to wash my hands. I use the hand wash outside exit or enter. Shanti first, then Mary Jo.
So, Mr. Chairman, do you mean a hand washing station or a hand sanitizer, automated hand sanitizer?
Good, good point there. It's an automated hand sanitizer.
Okay, that makes more sense.
I'm thinking water.
Yeah. No, no, it's not plumbing.
You think you have to refill it. I'm thinking you need a, that's why I was saying we didn't need more water in the Town Hall.
Yeah, yeah, so.
What I was gonna say is people, people use that on my station anyway.
Right.
There, they're always using it, so.
Yeah, right.
Well, forgive Diane for being, you know, dense.
I'm on the moon, right?
So Matt, Matt, question.
Thank you, Shanti for clarifying.
So those are actually filled with, those are automatic, no touch. You just put your hand underneath it, correct?
Right.
Exactly.
So I, I would be looking for definitely a couple for Town Hall on first floor, a couple on the second floor. If that's the case, and a couple for, a couple for Greenie Park, like one for the workers and one for the visitors. Greenie Park the same, and the transfer station, you probably use one on each building. If it's gonna get covered and that, that's an excellent cost to get covered.
Right.
I don't know what the cost is, so I'm looking now, looking at maybe 10 of them.
Okay, hang, hang on. Diane, the chief is on mute, I guess. He did, he needs to know star six, but I think you can unmute him if he doesn't.
He's not muted on my end.
I don't see him muted.
No. Chief do star six. See if that works.
I did it earlier, I just, no one could hear me.
There you are.
Here we are.
There I am.
So Chief Jewett.
It's been a few minutes.
What, uh, what's, how much were they again, each?
I, I, I'm thinking with, so what I did when I picked those ones up is I picked up the liquid hand sanitizer, if they're a refill. Most of the ones that were out commercially had bags in them. These ones don't. You just, you'd use a key, open it up and you dump the liquid back in. So I was able, I picked up, I think, six gallons of hand sanitizer to go with the three that we had. I think, and I was trying to pull the quote up while you guys were talking. If you want to be with me just for a minute, I can try to see if I can pull that up.
So while he's doing that, what I'd like to do is, the three we currently have, let's put one at Greenie Park, one at the town beach, one at the transfer station. Does that sound good?
Yep.
Excuse me, Matt?
And the library.
Well, they're not open yet, so. Go ahead, Terry.
Oh, okay. I wasn't sure if you could hear me. Thank you. Could it be possible for the library to be included as well? I was thinking initially when the discussion that they were with water outside stations too, what Diane was thinking. But with the sanitizer, that would be helpful for us as well.
Yeah, so that's good. So anybody taking these numbers down, it's, it's climbing. It's, it's like the telethon. We keep going up.
Yeah, I want one at my house too.
Yeah. Five, you need five for each Board of Select person's house.
And each entrance.
I just, I just want my ice cream.
Right. Charlie just wants his banana split.
Matt, where would they be at Greenie Park? Inside the building? You know, if they're outside, somebody's gonna swipe them.
Yeah, they'll definitely be swipeable. So maybe that's not a good idea. I think Greenie Park is unique in that it's not manned. So, and social distancing is more common. The town beach, we're gonna have the lifeguards bring them in and bring them out every night. So it's different at Greenie Park. And then the transfer station, they lock up. So maybe the park, we want to skip.
Or we can let the, uh, the baseball put them away inside the building.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea. Once, once they.
And then they can put it back.
Yeah.
Well, it, it all depends on, they look like guys. If they're a wall mount, that ain't gonna work out. If they're on a pedestal, that'd be good.
I think they have a pedestal.
All right, pedestal, then that will work in all, all areas, correct?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so.
I'm sorry.
Just so we can, was that Chief Jewett?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was able to find the price on it. To answer the question that you guys just brought up about Greenie Park, these can be mounted on a wall. We could secure one to the pavilion that's out there if you wanted to. You don't need to put the stand on it. They can be used as a standalone. If that helps. The hand sanitizing unit itself that dispenses the hand sanitizer was $75 and I believe the stands were 125.
Okay.
So it's 200 a piece.
Yeah. So let's, let's do this so we don't have to continue any further with the whole group on this subject. We have the three. We're gonna get those invoices to, to Kim. We're gonna put, or, or at least, maybe Tony can help us with this, Nancy. We're gonna have one at the beach, one at the park, one at the transfer station. And if everybody else could feed to, and I'll sign up Trish for this one. If they could feed to Trish their, their head counts of how many they want for their usage, and then Larry and Trish can kind of put together an order. Does that sound like a plan?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep, I'm good, yeah.
Okay, cool. And so the segue I'd like to make there is, we, again, phased reopening. We're signing up Tony already for a lot of things. Are there, some of our, are sort of, as I call them displaced workers, I think there's a couple of them we can start to bring back if we need them. So my question would be, I think, I think the, the deputy clerk, Mary Jo, can you use her for more hours? Is that what you need right now?
Question again?
So Cheryl.
Cheryl, if, if you're up to me, Cheryl would be in my office all day with me, all day.
Okay, so that's a motion. We're gonna call that a motion. What is the rest of the board? So. So Kate made the motion.
Not again.
Larry seconded.
Matt, just make the motion. It's okay.
I know. Larry seconded. We're gonna do a roll call and basically the motion is to return the deputy town clerk to her normal working hour.
But I have a question first.
Go ahead.
We have a little bit of a, just a little issue. I'm assuming because we're in close contact in the home, the office, it's a small office. Masks are supposed to be worn. Is it okay that only one of us wears a mask?
So what I was told, and I'm sure Kate has a few links she can send us. What I was, what I was told is if they're both wearing masks, the percentage of coming down with this is like 0.9%. If there are no masks, it's 70%. So.
Because I, we have a mask, Cheryl is very uncomfortable keeping a mask on her face all day. I have no issue doing it. I do it anyway when she's in the office, so.
So I think.
allowable.
I think, what's the board think about that?
Wait, can I have a question? When the partitions go up, will you be separated from Cheryl too?
No.
Would that be something you'd like so then she doesn't have to wear one?
We, that's impossible.
Oh, it's impossible. Yeah, okay. Could you put it in a little tiny cube? Just kidding.
Can we have our little bubbles?
Like those hamster bubbles?
Um, she's just uncomfortable with it on her face all day. I have no problem wearing it. I wear it everywhere, so it doesn't affect me. I, and it doesn't bother me that she does not wear one. We don't stand face yakking at each other anyway. She's doing her thing, I'm doing my thing.
I mean, she'll definitely need to wear it when you guys are interacting with other people. I don't know. I mean, oh gosh, it kind of would be ideal for her to wear it.
Shanti's raising his hand.
Yeah, so.
Mary, Mary Jo, how do you feel about face shields? I mean, that's, I ordered 10 face shields for Stratum because that way they're not, you know, it's not right against your face, you're not claustrophobic, it's not affecting your breathing. True, it might be a personal choice, but it's, it's, you know, it's like saying it's your choice to potentially damage someone else. And all of the guidance that, I mean, there hasn't been one shred of, of guidance that says feel free not to wear a mask if you're closer than six feet to another person. That's my two cents.
I do have one shield in the office that Chief Jewett was kind enough to give me. I think it's an awesome shield. It's great. So I mean, if she, like you said, I don't want to force anybody to wear anything they don't want to wear. I will mask whether she, and I don't know if it's allowed that she does or doesn't.
Can I make a comment, Matt?
Yeah, hold on. I just wanted to clarify something.
This is a great thing.
It's not, it's not, it's technically not a personal choice. We made a, we made a directive that everybody has to wear them in the buildings when they cannot social distance. So that's why Mary Jo's asking the question. So we, what we're being asked to do, if, if you really want to look at it, we're being asked to change our directive, which is fine. But you just have to know, I don't, I don't think we should be making a directive that says Cheryl and Mary Jo are exempt. We have to make a directive for everyone. And we could, we could have an in, not really an influx, but we'll have more workers earning, so.
And then they won't wear them.
Can we get the motion? Can we get the motion done?
What about, would she like a bandana? Would that like, is there nothing that she's comfortable in?
So timeout. Can we get the motion, the complete? So, timeout, can we get the motion, the, complete, we can come back to this, we have a motion on the table.
You should make the motion, Matt, not mine.
Already made it.
Good.
Correct, Diane, we're mid-motion.
Was this the one to allow Cheryl to go back to her normal hours?
Correct.
Should she?
That's the motion, I don't know, you know if you got a second on that?
I thought we did.
Second.
And she wants to do this.
There's the second.
Hi, Mary Jo!
All right, so, um, it's cor, it's ten seven, so let's, uh, move along. So, Larry, how do you vote?
Aye.
Charlie, how do you vote?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Matt's an aye, so we're, we're bringing Cheryl back, now the next question is.
If she wants to come back.
Are we telling Cheryl and Mary Jo that they need, need is the word, need to wear masks when they cannot social distance, which is basically all day?
So, I, I believe, I believe if one of them have it, ha- has it on, they're gonna be good.
Yeah, but what if they leave the office to go to the copier machine or something?
If they're gonna come in contact with another worker within six feet, then they should have it on, so Cheryl goes out to get a cup of coffee and Nancy's in the kitchen, she should have it on and respect, unless Nancy has one on. So there shouldn't be two people within the six feet without masks, put it that way.
And that six feet is key, you know, it's all about being six feet away from each other.
There's no six feet in the kitchen.
No, but if you're in your office and she wants to go for a cup of coffee, that's fine.
Yeah, but we might end up, the copiers there, we might end up out there together.
I think a lot of houses. A lot of houses have droplets scattered in the air, remain bu, remain viable for three hours, you know, that's another, it, you're, you're out and about, um, the town hall and without a mask, and then potentially the droplets are landing on the coffee maker, the refrigerator handle, so it's not really necessarily about inhaling the water droplets, it's from what I've been reading and understanding.
So.
And the air is very stagnant in that place.
So, here's, here's the thing, I've, um, we've all read, you know, other offices are coming back slowly but surely, and, you know, they're making their own rules, there's no hard and fast rule about what we have to do, but, um, I just, I mean, does somebody wanna make a motion one way or the other, keep in mind, like I said, this needs to be for town hall. You know, this can't be.
I think we have to have them in masks, especially people come in, you just have to, it stinks.
Now, I'll make this, I'll make the attempt here.
Okay, go.
If, if a worker is in their confined workspace with their coworker, one should have the mask on. Once the worker leaves his confined space and goes into public space, they need a mask on.
I'll second that.
All right, so that's a motion with a second, s- any more discussion?
Everybody understands that, right?
Yeah, I have reservations in terms of.
For dinner?
Example of what that might look like for people who start coming in and having, them having trouble with people coming with masks when you have reopening. People have to wear a mask when they come in, that's gonna be one of the. They come in with the mask and then someone behind the thing isn't in a mask, what kind of, that worries me.
So that's, that's about two weeks away, is the way I look at it, is tonight, we're trying, as, as, what's my famous line, fluid situation, where we're trying to focus on the next, you know.
Baby steps.
Yeah, so.
Are they doing like that classic checklist before people come into town hall, like Cheryl or Mary Jo, like how do you feel, do you take your temperature?
So.
No health.
See, I, let's, let's focus on this motion, maybe we can talk about that, but, but, um, so, so Larry's motion was.
What do you think? The task force is working on that, Kate, we'll give you, we'll present that to you.
So let's, uh, let's go around then, uh, Charlie, your vote?
Oh, I'm in favor, yes.
Okay, and Larry?
Aye.
Kate?
Unconditional, if they have a HEPA filter in there and enough, maybe.
Yes, sir.
So you're maybe, can we do that, Diane, can you put that?
Yes or no abstain?
Nay, but I will change it if there's a HEPA filter back there.
Okay.
There's a nay, to add a little drama, I'm a yes, okay?
Woo!
That was, that was close, we almost had to get Lisa on this call. Um, okay, so Mary Jo, does that work for you guys for the near term?
That works fine for me, because I mean, one, once you look at our soft opening, you will see that there is only one resident in that building at a time.
Yeah, right, right.
But if anything happens to Mary Jo, we're in trouble. We gotta go back there at all costs.
Sure, yeah.
Um, but, I mean, I, I, like I said, I have no problem with masks, I wear it anyway when I'm in the building. And so when Nancy comes in, I put it on.
I do too, yep.
Take it off.
And is Cheryl at least distancing and like not, she's partying all the time, right?
She, oh yeah, no. I know, I go from here to work in home, I don't go anywhere, my children don't let me shop, they don't let me do anything. The only other place I do is drop the deposits off at the bank, so between work, bank, here, that's all I do. What she does, I don't know.
Well, that should be considered.
So, so if we're okay on that topic and we can move along.
Can I ask one question, Matt?
Go ahead.
Shanti said they have the face shields, is there any chance that we can get a face shield? So, my glasses fog up with the, with the, you know, mask thing that we use, the surgical mask.
We can try to order some.
I, I don't like cases, I gotta be able to read and see, I don't like a flimsy.
Hold on, Chief Alcindino's gonna solve all our problems, Chief, go ahead.
I have some extra face masks, I'll be more than glad to give some to the EOC.
Perfect.
So, at any rate.
I thought we wanted some shields.
You can test drive them.
Okay, good.
Right?
Wasn't that what he said, the shield?
I thought he said face mask.
Yeah, it's a shield.
It's the same, I, I apologize, you can call it a face mask, you can call it a shield, you can call it a hockey shield, it's all the same thing, it goes around your head, clear plastic on the front, it's what we use with our safety glasses.
Yeah, that's what I want.
So, so test drive those if we need to make, um, formal order to get you guys enough, then we can do so. All right, so, Tony, um, we have Tony doing a certain amount of hours now anyway, Nancy, right?
Yes, yep.
So I think we need to increase him with the town beach and the park.
Yep.
And it probably wouldn't hurt to increase him a little bit for more people being in the town hall. But, does the board, I don't think the board needs, what's his normal, his normal is twenty?
Sixteen, we are eighteen, but right now he's working like fifteen.
Yeah, fifteen is what we've been paying him.
He could probably do a little more, and he's already agreed to clean the town hall and stuff, so.
Right.
So, is, uh, the board okay if we, um, have Tony kind of back on in seeing how many hours he can, uh, not, not how many hours he can work, but the, to see what the amount of hours is he's needed for in the current timeframe, is the board okay with doing that?
I'm good.
Yep, yep, it looks like it'd be about twenty hours total.
Yep.
Well, I'm thinking eighteen some weeks and maybe fifteen another week, it might, who knows, I mean, he usually.
Yep.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna motion. I'm, I'm gonna motion not to exceed eighteen hours for Tony returning to work.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second.
Charlie's seconding, Larry's seconding too, which means Larry's a yes vote, Kate, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Charlie?
Yes.
And Matt's an aye.
Okay.
And I, I think, uh, in my opinion, those are really the only two that we have kind of a pressing need to get back and going at the moment. Does anybody disagree?
No, but I have a question.
Should we be bringing back the, uh, police department secretary?
I believe she has been back, Chief Jewitt?
Hi, yeah, no, she, her hours, she's been picking them up more, she's not actual full-time hours every week.
Okay, so what, what do you wanna do with, uh, her currently?
I think he just hung up.
Really?
Yep, looked and he was gone.
So I guess that means we can talk about it later at another meeting.
Sometimes he gets in a bad sales area, so.
Uh, he just got kicked off the call, maybe he's coming back, Trish had a question, then Mary Jo.
I just have a question, and it's above my pay grade, but I'm gonna toss it out to you, Board of Selectmen. If, uh, Tony is bouncing back and forth between town hall and the beach, does he get mileage or gas, or, are you, will he ask for anything like that?
So, he's done this for a long time.
Did everybody freeze, uh-oh.
Okay.
I'm the only one that's alive here.
I'm alive.
It wasn't part of the order.
Okay.
Not part of the order, but part of the offer when we hired him years ago, so.
What was, what was the question, 'cause everybody froze up except me.
Oh, you're kidding?
Yeah, right, everybody froze.
We're talking about Tony and mileage, which we've never done with him.
No, he doesn't want mileage.
Okay.
So.
Just curious.
Yep.
Is Chief Jewitt back?
No.
Mary Jo wants to talk.
Mary Jo's got something, go, Mary Jo.
Got something to say, um, when, when does this take effect, as far as Cheryl coming back?
Uh, when, when do you want it to?
I gotta give her at least today's notice, so, Monday.
You want it, it seems effective Monday would be a round number, right?
Monday's good, since there's not one day left today, you know, tomorrow is one day.
Exactly, so Kate made that motion, are you okay with updating that motion, Kate, to say effective, what's that, the eighth of June?
Or effective whatever Mary Jo wants.
I don't know if you were here, but she just said, she just said Monday was good.
Okay, she really means it.
So.
So moved.
Okay, great, so everybody's okay with that, right, so?
So Matt, Matt question?
Go ahead.
Does, uh, Diane or Nancy, do they have any interest in coming back full-time?
I am working full-time.
Yeah, I'm working full-time.
So back in, back in the office?
I, I don't have a problem with it, I mean, I don't mind working some days at home and working in the office some days.
Why don't we just start where we are and slow it down?
So, um, Mary Jo is waving.
If, once you look at our soft opening.
Right.
We have planned on doing, it is my office that opens first.
Yep.
How we do it, we wanna see if what we're doing is going to work.
Right.
And we want to bring back Diane and Nancy when it's time.
Right, we'll have a plan.
We wanna make sure our plan works first.
Right.
We get, and then everybody else can come back in, 'cause like Trish says, they don't wanna see them, they wanna see me.
Yeah.
So the other thing I would add is every phased reopening plan I've seen, uh, New Hampshire en masse, really, one of the things it says in the early phases is, employees who can work from home should continue to work from home. So, I, I would just throw that in there, but I, but I think we, uh, we need to table that for now, and then we'll see how it goes.
Yep.
But, um, is Chief Jewitt back?
No, he's trying, I asked him to dial back in.
All right, so what he just texted me was, she's been progressively adding hours.
But is that in the PD itself, or just online, do you know?
I, I don't have that answer, I was under the impression she was forty hours, forty hours every week, most of it worked from home. She was coming in here, here and there as necessary, so we need confirmation that, that is correct. 'Cause my understanding is, like I said, that she is still a forty-hour employee. What people have to remember, let's make this clear, when people are working from home, they do not have the day off.
Right.
When people are working from home, they are working from home, so Diane and Nancy are working at home, okay? So, there's still forty hours, there, it's just a matter of where they are, so.
He's back.
Let's table that.
Is our agenda done?
No.
I, I hope we're close. You said Chief Jewitt's back?
Correct, yep.
So Chief, explain for us the, uh, the secretary's status right now.
Yep, uh, sorry, I got kicked off, I, I've been kicked out of a lot of places, but, um, so she, um, Jen has been working, um, more, coming into the PD a couple days a week, uh, more than we had the previous week. Um, so she's still in a half-status, I'd call it, uh, she's been coming in about three days a week instead of five. Um, and it's just, there's more stuff that you can't get there.
Let me, let me jump in, here's the key question, what do you mean by half-status?
You completely cut out on me, I'm sorry.
Okay, what do you mean by half-status?
Uh, half-status, I guess maybe that's a bad, bad choice of words, um, she's coming in, um, she's coming in to do payroll, emails and stuff that she cannot do from home, um, so she's been coming in more, um, and finding that there's been more days that we need to follow up with stuff. Um, so it's, every week we seem to be adding more time.
Okay, so when you say adding, I just want clarity, because people seem to be getting confused, she's working forty hours a week, right?
She is putting in, in the, in the building, she's adding more hours, otherwise she's at home working on the computer or whatever it is.
Right, I understand. I'm, I'm, I'm not so concerned with where people are. She's working forty hours a week, correct?
I keep losing you, I'm sorry.
Okay, she's working forty hours a week, correct?
We're putting in forty hours, correct.
Exactly, okay, so, there's our answer, so she is working from home some of the time, and she is working in the office some of the time, but she is still working forty hours a week. So, so I guess the answer to Charlie's question is, we don't have to bring her back, uh, unless we want her in the office more, I guess, I guess, do we wanna leave that up to the chief as he, as he, uh, needs her or feels it's appropriate to be in the office, he can do so, is that what the board wants to do?
No, I'd rather leave it up to the board.
I say bring her back.
Right, so, you wanna bring her back to work.
But she's already working.
No, hold on Kate, you wanna bring her back to work forty hours in the office? In the office, that's what Charlie's.
That's what I'm saying.
So, Chief, what do you think of that?
That shouldn't be a problem, um, I, you know, with, I'll, um, I can reach out to her and make sure there's no issue with that, um, I wouldn't think there would be. Um, the only thing that I can think of is that she's having childcare issues, uh, with her and her husband's status with, uh, both having jobs that are law enforcement.
Okay, the.
Isn't it like bringing someone into the office who's now having lots more contact with the outside world, aren't we supposed to do this slowly? Is it, is it working out as it is? If it's working out as it is, why are we changing it?
So.
There's gonna be a second tick, this seems like we're not supposed to open everything now, can't we, I think we should wait and see, that's my. Yeah, let's wait for the task force.
Yeah.
Wait for the task force to do their job. Right.
Yeah.
Use it all these, please.
I think this is the same conversation as Diane and Nancy.
Yes.
Yeah.
It really is.
Again, what I said, if you're able to work from home, I think all the advice we're getting right now is to keep doing so.
Absolutely. It's too soon to just open it all up and bring her back.
Can we move off of this topic?
So move. Matt, can I ask Mary Jo one quick question, you were talking about the, um, the door lock, Mary Jo, they have the buzzer, so you could let people in?
We do that later?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, someone had mentioned that, that.
Task force, task force.
That's like.
Okay, I thought you had decided that, okay.
Um, okay.
Sorry.
I think the only thing left on the agenda was. I think the only thing left on the agenda was something we forgot to do last night.
Uh-oh.
Appointments.
Yeah, okay, so I'll just, hopefully somebody's got the appointments from last night. They can read for us, but I'll just start it with this. These are appointments for the Rockingham Planning Commission. And I'll just speak for myself. I think most of the board agrees with me, but, so we have appointments to the Rockingham Planning Commission that typically the planning board votes on. They send them to us and we basically sign off on them essentially and announce them, right? So, um, what I saw, the appointments, we all saw the appointments, there are two folks on there that have been longtime, uh, representatives for the town of Newton, Newton on the Rockingham Planning Commission. They've done a lot for the town and represented us well. Uh, they, one is for a four-year term, the other is for a two-year term. And it looks like they've, they've added a, uh, backup, which is a good thing. So there's a third person who is a backup. What I think the board wants to do, and the board can correct me if I'm wrong, is we're encouraging the planning board to do the following. Put a posting on our website to go out to the entire town to see if we can get a second backup. And the reason is, I think we all agree, is that it's good to have people trained and backups can become the representatives down the road because the backups are allowed to attend the meetings. They just can't vote unless somebody is sick or somebody's, you know, car trouble or whatever. So we already have one backup. I think we want to see a second backup. And then I think the best thing to do would be you train those backups. So next time around, these folks who have served us so well for years and years and years can kind of move off and the backups can take the role. And I think it's important for succession planning, which we don't have enough of in the town. Anybody on the board disagree with what I'm saying or want to say anything else?
No, I agree a hundred percent.
Okay, great. So we'll have this in the minutes and we're gonna work with the planning board to have this posted on the website. Within the next couple of weeks, we can revisit it again at a meeting is what I'd like to see. Uh, if, if there's a problem getting the ad to put on the website. Um, and I'd just add that I talked to a lot of residents who are like, they do this for a living. They're civil engineers or whatever. And they'd love to be involved, but they can't commit to, to Tuesdays a month. So there's always a, you know, a possibility, something like this could get new people involved. So does somebody have the, uh, appointments they can read off for this motion?
Just for the Rockingham.
I have to.
Somebody has?
Okay.
Sorry, Larry, go ahead. Sorry.
No, I don't have, I know the names, but I don't have the, the name with the year. So I, I know it's Jim Doggett.
For four, I believe.
Four, yeah. Mary Allen's two, yep.
Mary Allen Doggett.
Let's do this. Uh, Larry, just a motion for Jim Doggett to be appointed for a four-year term to the Rockingham Planning Commission. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, let's go around the room. Larry, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, Charlie?
No.
Uh, Kate?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye. So the next one would be Mary Allen for a two-year term to the Rockingham Planning Commission. Can I get a second?
I'll second her.
Charlie's a second and we're gonna go around. Kate, how do you vote?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye. So, so that one's unanimous. And I believe we had Annie Collier as a backup, but I don't think there was a term, correct?
There's a term.
What was that?
March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
So.
Four years.
Essentially four years.
Yep.
So I'll do that motion. Annie Collier as the backup representative, as a backup representative for a term of four years. Can I get a second?
Second.
Kate, Kate was faster.
Yeah.
Let's go around. Uh, Charlie, how do you vote?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye. So that's unanimous. Anything else on the agenda?
I do not have anything else.
Dinner.
Would, hopefully, hopefully it's still warm. Uh, so I'm gonna move to adjourn, get a second.
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 And we're all in favor, so, um, everybody have a good night. And remember, if you're marking your calendars, we do this again next Wednesday. We do not have one on Monday. Thank the heavens. Um, so we'll see you guys Wednesday night, six o'clock.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night.
Have a good night, everybody.
Bye. Good night.